Call to order the meeting of the Cohasset Planning Board for April 10, 2024. Alphabetical roll call, Tom Callahan here.
Kevin Hein here.
Amy. Amy, you're here, right?
She may not be connected to audio yet.
Amy, are you connected to audio?
Well, Deirdre's here, regardless. Maybe Amy will figure out she can't hear us eventually.
It looks like your screen is frozen, too. All right, and Deirdre's here. Welcome, Deirdre. I'm gonna start to get stuff out of the way. Can I have a motion to approve the minutes of March 20, 2024?
So moved.
I'll second that. All in favor? Tom Callahan, I.
Kevin Hein, I.
You saw your lips move, Deirdre. That counts.
Deirdre Hobson, I.
Amy, are you connected? All right, anyway, we are joined tonight by our town planner, Sandra Thayer and our town council, Carolyn Murray. Our first third gendered item is a large home review on Black Horse Lane. Clark just messaged me, he's going ahead, he's gone a little late. Amy, can you hear us? Let me just text her for a minute, but if you could bring on the applicant.
Yes.
Thank you.
Do you want me to begin reading the public hearing notice?
Yeah, if you could, please.
Okay. So, notice of public hearing Cohasset Planning Board pursuant to MGL Chapter 40A and Section 300-5.4 of the Cohasset zoning bylaws. The planning board will hold a virtual public hearing on the Zoom platform. Webinar ID 875-838-10525. Passcode 427958 on Wednesday, April 10, 2024 at 6:30 PM. For a large house plan review for property known as Lot A470 Black Horse Lane, Cohasset, Massachusetts, 02025. The application is for a large house plan review for a single-family home with a total residential gross floor area, or GFA, of 6,714 square feet. The application is submitted by Stephen Callahan of 12 Bay Ave, Duck Spray, Mass., 02332. Copy of the application and plans and accompanying documents are on file for viewing in the Town Clerk's Office, Echo House at Town Hall, 41 Highland Avenue, Monday through Thursday, 8:00 AM to 4:30 PM, and Friday, 8:00 AM to 12:00 PM. Electronic versions of application material can be obtained by visiting CohassetMA.org/activePBapplications. Any person interested or wishing to be heard on the application should access the virtual meeting at the time designated. Signed, Thomas J. Callahan, Chair of Planning Board.
Thank you, Cassandra. All right, for the record, Mr. Callahan and I are not related. Perhaps long ago, centuries ago in the gene pool, but not now. So, Mr. Callahan, you have the floor. If you want to share your screen, feel free. You're muted right now, sir.
Amy, okay?
Yep.
Okay, well, thank you for the intro. Unfortunately, I apologize, I'm dealing with a cold this week. So, I brought on my architect, should be online, I don't know. Cassandra, if you can see him, Dick Rockwood, of Rockwood Design.
There is someone here who is unlabeled, so I will promote the unlabeled person and hopefully it'll be him.
Yeah, that should be him. Dick is our architect and he has all the plans and is prepared to sort of walk the board through what we have and happy to answer questions after. There he is.
There I am, okay. Do you need to let me have the screen and then I can run you through the project?
You should be able to screen share.
Just introduce yourself, please.
Oh, I'm Dick Rockwood of Rockwood Design. It's an architectural firm. I did all the architectural work for Mr. Callahan. Okay, share. Screen. Start broadcast. Screen. Why is that not coming up? Let's see. So. Do I share the screen? Share device. Stop. Don't know why it is not coming up. Can you see my screen?
Yeah, now we see a couple things.
Oh, okay. So, let's see, my OneDrive, okay. Here's where, so here is, here is the site.
You have 62,900 emails, you're meant to catch up.
I know. Sorry.
I thought mine was high.
All right, so here's the site. It's now 74 Black Horse Lane is the actual address of this lot. This is an existing barn that's on this property here. And we, and that that building itself is about 4,600 square feet between the two floors. So what we're adding on to that is a breezeway area and a two-car garage with a potential space above the garage and the breezeway area is a two-story to connect the two floors of the existing structure. And it would be a four-bedroom home. Three bedrooms on the upstairs, a master bedroom on the first floor. There is a greenhouse that is connected there on the right-hand side. And that's going to be potentially a play area or a pool house where that greenhouse is. So what we're adding is that shaded area with the porch and the the addition and the garage with the room above the garage.
What's the square footage?
It's, I think it was mentioned a minute ago, it's like 6,300 square feet in total. The building itself, the existing barn itself is actually, if I take everything, including the greenhouse, it's 4,600 square feet. So we're adding about 1,328 square feet to the structure, which is the functionality of the garage, the room above the garage, and the two-story breezeway connector. So. We have the driveway shown. I've also given a lighting plan on this plan right at the beginning there, Black Horse Lane, it's this little lantern shown, and we have four lanterns coming down the driveway. And then one where you turn and back up there. And other than that, any other lighting would just be downlighting under the porch as you enter the house. I have, I don't know if you have any more questions on the site plan, I can show you photos of the project.
Is there anything on this plan that shows all the dimensional requirements and where you are with them?
All these calculations, area calculations. The zoning table.
So you're at 20% coverage?
Uh, yes.
Do you calculate an FAR for this by chance?
Uh, yes, that that has been done, should be on this.
Just curious.
This is all the surveyor's calculations here that I have. So.
And what's the, what's the height?
Uh, the height of our building is the existing building is less than 35 feet, there's no change to that. Our addition's shorter than the existing building. But he just has it as less than 35 feet here.
Do you have any, you have any drawings that show?
Oh, yes, I do. I have a full set of architectures for what we're doing. And a little 3D, I can pull that up now if you'd like.
Anybody else on the board have any questions about the site plan?
I don't see any detail with regard to the lighting, I just see lanterns and an arrow pointing to what looks to be a small sun.
Uh, yes, there's four of those as they go down the driveway. I can't point, so.
What are they?
And there's a lantern, I have, I have a photo of that, I'll show you here. There's the the lighting that we're proposing. Four of those. Just six feet tall.
So those are, those are perfect for delivering glare at eye level. And for not containing any amount of light, any shielding, you can see the bulb provides almost zero amount of shielding. And I can see issues with that, can discuss some further, or you can look into options, I just, I don't see how that would be helpful to mitigate any amount of light trespass away from where it's helpful. Even for a vehicle or vehicles using that driveway that's proposed, having a light like that would provide glare to the drivers. I don't, I don't see that any design functionality for that.
Okay, we can reconsider something with a little more downlighting and less exposed bulb, I know we can change the wattage in the bulb and they don't really disperse, the owner has some of those on another property and liked them, and that's Mr. Callahan did, so that's why we had proposed that. But they don't cast an awful lot of light, but once again, I mean, it's all about wattage and what you put in there. But if we need to show something a little less than that, then we can discuss that. Or something with more of downlighting or lower.
Yeah, those were functional during a time when wattages were much less than what can be delivered now from smaller bulbs and the you know, greenery, shrubbery, just the overall vegetation was at a higher level than it is today. And the whole idea now behind us bringing up these points and asking for consideration of them with review of these plans when it comes to lighting is to minimize any glare. Still provide for the functionality of the device for the intended purposes. And any trespass, anything that could be seen from other neighbors or properties should be kept to a minimum or eliminated entirely. As well as trespass of light just going straight up into the sky, so.
Okay, and we're not really close to any other butters, but point well taken, Will.
But yeah, you know, we're close to the coast and all it takes is a fog and something to come in and you get any amount of light that goes up can be visible from, you'd be surprised how far it's visible from, given the output of some of the lights that can deliver these days.
Okay, then we'll reconsider that. Let me show you the house if I may. Plans. This is so this is our approach, the barn is in the background there, this is the approach to the garage. There's a section through the breezeway against the barn.
There you go.
Yeah. Let's see, this is the side view, so this is the south side of that barn and what was the greenhouse, which will be our, possibly a pool area, small little exercise area. Then on the left is the two-car garage with a room above the garage. Rec room, probably unfinished right now, but at least the space is there for the future. And there's our main entry as we come in and the breezeway above it, so that is the portion that we're adding on there. This is the the water side of the barn. And it's pretty much staying as is, other than adding some windows that are a little, a little larger than what's there. That little sunroom on the left is there now. It's just pretty disrepair, so that's getting rebuilt, but the footprint remains the same. Everything you see from the back here is the main existing footprint.
No, on that height of the building, were any measurements taken or was it just assumed that the existing barn was not 35 feet high? We changed the way we calculate height with multiple points of measurement. I just want to know if it was verified. Was it just assumed that this was less than 35 feet?
Yeah, that's 35 feet from the average grade.
And how many points did you have to determine what the average grade was?
The lot is Philly level all the way around the house except for just what you're seeing in the back here. I can give you, I can do those calculations and give them to you, I don't have them in front of me or in this document here.
Anybody else on the board have any questions, comments? All right, do we have any members of the public who wish to be heard on this? I see one of butter. Anybody who wouldn't be heard, raise your hand or ask to be promoted. All right, so I guess in summary, we height calculations that where all the data points were to measure that. And we need some rethinking of the lighting.
Would we need that just as we apply for the permit, or do we is there any way we can move forward and not necessarily continue this hearing?
That's not in practice. And the other thing is, you know, from the subdivision decision, nothing is going to get built here until the road is done. That's, I don't have the language in front of me from that decision, but this is not going to get built right away. That was one of the conditions of the subdivision approval.
Yeah, I was not involved with that.
No, it was another applicant, but your property is, you know, taking advantage of that, we, you know. It's on a road that's 12 feet wide at the moment, it needs to be, it's planned to be 20 feet wide, so. Carolyn, since that was the other subdivision decision, can we add a condition here that it not be no building, no building permit until the road is ready?
I believe the language, Mr. Chair, was in that a CO would not be issued until until the road was complete, and I have, I've already been in contact with Mr. DiNuno. And, you know, we are coordinating those timeframes. So.
You just need to, you might be right, I just, I don't have it in front of me, unfortunately.
Yeah, well, trust me, I've been tracking this stuff and we're anxious to get going. So that was the plan.
I'm a lawyer, I don't trust anybody.
All right, well, you can verify that. But that's, that was the plan and I knew, you know, when things got tied to the other project, I've been in contact with Mr. DiNuno and, you know, Will, planning on coordinating all efforts here.
Is his timeframe to get started fairly soon?
Yes, yeah, he's planning on starting very soon.
Okay. All right, well, then our next meeting is Wednesday, the 24th. We only have one other item on the agenda, so you can entertain a motion, you know, your permission will agreement will continue this to the 24th at 6:30.
Amy had her hand up, but I'm not sure her audio is coming through at all.
Did she? Amy, now we can hear you finally, okay, go ahead, I'm sorry, go ahead.
I'm not satisfied with that answer regarding the road and the specification for, that we agreed to in the approval of subdivision, it needs to be more specific than that and it needs to be written down. I really appreciate the the applicant attempting to be considerate of any concern that we might have, but we really need to have a piece of paper that says exactly what's supposed to happen and when it's supposed to happen before anybody does anything.
Condition.
I can't, Tom, I can't hear you.
That condition was put upon the subdivision, this property was not part of the subdivision, so Carolyn, can we put a condition on this that that's similar to the one we put in the subdivision, whether it's building permit or CO, whichever one?
Well, if I may, Mr. Chair, we did have ongoing litigation with 70 Black Horse Lane that was also resolved. So we did have an entry into a settlement agreement relative to that parcel. And it does say that no occupancy certificate shall be issued for any new house to be built on any lot shown on the A and R plan until the binder force has been applied to the private portion of Black Horse Lane.
Okay. There's, there's, there's what's in writing, Amy, is the decision to settle.
What does that mean? Does that mean that they can go ahead and do the project starting now? Or do they have to wait for any sort of further verification that they've been approved to go forward? It's not clear to me.
They can start building, they can't get a certificate of occupancy until the road is at a certain level of development. That's, that goes, that goes for all new houses in the subdivision or on this, on this side of the road, so.
Well, I just hope that we don't end up in a situation where the existing residents have a different understanding than we do. Because it was a lengthy negotiation and there was significant contention about the quality of the road prior to anything happening, so I'm not feeling very comfortable, I want to see a piece of paper.
Mr. Chair, if I may.
Yeah, go ahead.
We had two, I want to be clear, we had litigation involving 70 Black Horse Lane, which is what this house is or this barn is a part of, and then we had separate litigation for the balance of Black Horse Lane under the subdivision. We do have a signed settlement agreement signed by a majority of the board as well as Mr. DiNuno. I'm sorry, actually signed by Mr. Callahan, I apologize. Where they agree that no occupancy permit can be issued until that binder force is down.
Okay.
To John Howland to enforce because John Howland issues the COs.
Right, and I remember how that negotiation went down, I just have this feeling that I'm a little uncomfortable and a little bit worried that the residents that currently live there, I hope they understood exactly what we agreed to. That's just my concern.
It's pretty straightforward.
Mr. Chair, may I?
Yeah, fine.
We're talking about a year of construction here. This is, you know, kind of a major renovation, small addition. But, you know, we have a lot of work to do. So there's, this isn't months, this is, this is a year before we're looking for occupancy.
I mean, it's written in a court settlement agreement, so I don't know how much more binding a document you could find, so.
I guess I'm wondering, would the neighbors have gotten a copy of that document?
No. Unless it was, you know, if it's a public record now, they can get one, but at the time, in settling litigation, they weren't parties to the litigation. But we also made the same condition part of the subdivision in very public hearings. And we made it part of that decision.
I mean, it's not that I don't remember that, but what I worry about is whether or not the information was sufficiently transferred to the residents who spoke specifically about their concern of what's been going on with regard to the road already, prior and prior to when we made our agreement. And if they weren't notified.
They were, they were participating, they participated in the public hearing on the subdivision, which has the same condition. They knew what we were doing. Not every resident is entitled to know how lawsuits get settled. But the same condition has been carried over to the settlement of lawsuit that was in the public, the very public subdivision decision. I don't know what else you are looking forward to give them.
Okay.
All right, so make a motion that we continue this to April 24 at 6:30 PM.
Deirdre had her hand up.
Oh, I'm sorry, I can't see her, if we're done with the screen, can we stop the screen sharing so I can see?
If I'm understanding, Amy, this is more of a procedure question for us in the future. That no building could happen until that road was done. By my understanding, what she's shooting at here, I understand her concern, which is now we have, we have set a protocol in place there that allows other building to start when the road isn't done yet. So I understand what she's saying, we've made our decision on that past thing, we can't go back, but it's something for us to learn from, and I say that to the developers and to the contractors, that's all I'm saying.
Understood. All right, anybody else? All right, then again, I've made motion to continue this to April 24 at 6:30 PM, can I have a second?
Second.
All in favor, Tom Callahan, I.
Amy Glassmore, I.
Kevin Hein, I.
Deirdre Hobson, I.
We'll see you then.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. All right. I want to take a break for a minute and just let Clark join us. In the meantime, I'm going to share a screen. All right, is Clark out there yet, Cassandra?
Yes, not, I will admit him as soon as he is.
Yeah, I just, I just texted him to say we were finishing up. Well, I'll just tell everybody else that you know, so as our public hearing on the bylaw changes, we all recommended articles one. articles one through seven of the zoning bylaw committee articles by four to zero votes. Tonight, we were going to deal with, continue the hearing to deal with articles eight and nine. Eight is the proposed switch to floor area ratio as a measurement. And nine would be to um, preserve large home review and just amend language to conform to adopting floor area ratio. Um, I met with the zoning board last night. They approved uh, one through seven as well by, I don't know, their, their membership that last night varied as the night went on, so I, safe to say there were four zero votes on it, um, maybe five zero. So with respect to tonight, you know, based on what I circulated today, and I apologize, but I have a lot of work to do on this. I circulated some amendments to the floor area ratio based on, largely based on discussion with the plant, uh, zoning board last night. And I urged everybody to read the notes. Um, so there's a lot of changes here that actually removes changes that were originally proposed and makes it somewhat simpler. No definitional changes necessary, um, the overall coverage of building plus other impervious materials would stay at thirty percent rather than being reduced. But, um, I, you know, again, th- th- this keeps to be moving a target and every time I meet with a different board, there's a different set of opinions and I would like to have town council's input. Is Clark on yet? He said he was getting in. What should wait for? You know, he's here.
He just popped in.
Okay, Clark, you're here. Yeah, okay, so.
Good to see you.
Yeah, I just briefly was recounting what we did last week and what the zoning board did last night and, uh, so in response to meeting with the zoning board, I have done a revision to article eight. And the suggestions of the zoning board, they caught some word smithing things for article nine, but nothing of substance, um. And I really would like to have town council's input on this before we go forward with it. So I'm going to propose tonight that we continue the public hearing once again. Now, I was told today that meeting with advisory next Wednesday. And that the selectmen, the select board is finalizing the warrant on Tuesday, the twenty third. So the only available night for us to get in before the selection do, to put our recommendations on these two articles would be Monday, Monday, the twenty second. So you just heard that we have a meeting on Wednesday, the twenty fourth, and what we have for that is this continued large home review. And we have a commercial site plan review on three A. It's not a long agenda on the twenty fourth, but unfortunately, the twenty fourth is the night after the select board needs to make their final decisions on the warrant. So I'm going to suggest we meet on Monday, the twenty second. This would be the only agenda item. We finish our public hearing then. In order to give Carolyn time to look at this article and I don't want to go for, you know, again, responding to all kinds of comments from the select board, zoning board, bylaw committee. I'd rather just, you know, also have council's opinion now rather than later, you know. There'd be chaos if it gets on the warrant and we have to make major.
So, so Tom, are you saying you want to continue the discussion on your zoning? Um, um.
Yeah, on articles eight and nine.
Your F A R discussions?
Yeah, and I want you to, I want you to focus on this revision that was done today because it's based on a lot of changes that were made based on the discussion with the zoning board. That makes it somewhat simpler.
The, the numbers are the same. So you're using.
The same, the number, yeah, the numbers are the same, but the overall coverage is not going to be reduced to twenty five percent. Stay at thirty, they convinced me. Convinced me of that. And then all the new definitions that I put in would be gone and we can, we would.
But, but you're, in terms of the, Tom, in terms of the area, uh, F A R is defined in the zoning bylaw now.
Yes, it is.
Are you using that definition that, 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 um, nets out, uh, wetlands and stuff like that?
Yes, yes.
Okay.
Yeah. And we're going to use the same definition of coverage, which, you know, I guess in my original draft, and I don't recall putting it in there, but it would have also included pervious hard materials like pavers and you know, crushed stone and things of that sort. Zoning board convinced me to take that out, so that means we don't need a new definition of, uh, you know, hard scapes and all this other stuff. So all these definitions are gone. Um, a lot clearing one we can deal with when we deal with any changes to land alteration by law, which wouldn't be till the fall, so. So it's somewhat simpler and, you know, the major other change is to, you know, this, this portion of this new subsection T, that's what everybody knows that the bylaw committee have built in this process where rather than hit, you get to the maximum floor area ratio, you hit a hard wall that you would need a variance after we put in this condition of having you can go up to hundred ten percent of F A R by special permit. Uh, the bylaw committee last meeting wants to keep this in. The zoning board of appeals last night said they would keep it in. The select board wants it out, so. Yeah, right now it's in. And then the other thing we had to deal with in order to focus on is U, which is to deal with non-conforming, in pre-existing non-conforming lots and structures. And there's a court case, there's a court case about that that Clark has brought to our attention and some of us have known anyway, but, um, and it had to specifically deal with Brookline, which is one of the first towns to go to F A R in residential settings and you know, the interaction of the non-conforming, pre-existing non-conforming and a new F A R limit, so. So basically, the, the nutshell of that is that pre-existing non-conforming could expand over if A R that's set, if the zoning board makes the finding under article eight that it's not more substantially detrimental to you maybe. I'm going to do, so anyway, I don't want to get into too much of the detail, but those are the changes that made. I want to focus on this version of it.
Is there some perspective that Carolyn could give us, uh, if we're going to put this off?
No, no, Carolyn, Carolyn just, again, I sent this out this morning, this afternoon, when I got back from court and Carolyn had emailed me just before this meeting that she was only just getting back from her own day and appointments and hasn't had the chance to look at this. So we just.
You're, you're answering for Carolyn. Good.
Yes, because, Mr. Chair, could I just interrupt for a moment too? If, and maybe if Cassandra, could you scroll to the top so we can see the title of, of this one? Because I think it is Z B C seven or eight, eight, okay? Um, I'm looking at your agenda for this evening. And we've only listed articles Z one through Z six. I do see one that refers to article five and its area regulations.
So Judge Cutler had recommended that, uh, some of the original proposed articles that had multiple votes be broken out into separate articles. So Tom broke them out into separate articles. Which created the more numbers.
Right. What, what is now Z B C one through nine was originally proposed as Z B C one through six because two or three of those articles had multiple votes within them.
Okay.
And she suggested splitting them all out because if we had to deal with amendments on the floor, it would be easier to deal with them as separate.
Okay, I, I, I do remember that. I'm just going through the packet.
It's, it's the same material and then, you know, the Z B C at its last meeting wanted to add language about the non-conforming and make the distinction between new construction and non-conforming. Um, but what is in the, what was advertised was just the article with this change here. Um, so that's what's advertised and we're posing to, you know, based on discussions with multiple boards now and, and to comply with case law is to also add this. And, you know, one of my questions in my emails today is our, the, the planning board's ability to amendments at this stage. So, um.
Well, I can answer that for you right now.
Yeah.
This is a planning board article. And yes, you can make amendments to, um, your own zoning amendment, particularly where it has not yet, um, you know, where the warrant has not yet been finalized. You still have the ability to tweak it. The only thing you can't do is you've got to keep scope in mind. So, uh, you know, just to say something crazy, if you were going to introduce something right now about, say, hey, we need to regulate lighting and sign better than currently do. That's, that's too late. But I think what you're proposing here um, is certainly within your, your purview from the planning board's public hearing to tweak this before you get to your final version to town meeting.
And with respect to Z B C nine, the, what was advertised was the potential elimination of large home review. But based on discussions with all the boards up to this point, we're going to keep large home review that it can coexist with floor area ratio. And we're just doing some simple amendments to reflect them. I presume that's in our scope too. We could, rather than eliminate it, we're choosing not to eliminate it and just conform, conform it to the changes brought by the previous article. That's all.
I would agree with that.
Okay. Um, and, and by the way, I'm continuing to get word sniffing from other quarters about.
Tom, Kevin's had his hand up for.
I can't, I, I'm sorry, I can't see it. I.
Well, that's why I mentioned it.
Thank you.
I can see it.
Go ahead.
Thanks. I, um, was just looking for a break in the, in the ongoing discussion to just ask, Tom, for those that were not in attendance at select board hearings, for hearings where you, where this was delivered or carried forth to other town boards. I'm interested in hearing, it can be synthesized as briefly as you can, what is the alternating opinions on the advantage for their proposed leaving something in as a hard stop or, or allowing something to have a ten percent push in one direction?
Yeah, that part, that part, I'll tell you exactly what the select boards.
Well, not just the select board. I'd like to hear what the opposing side is with regard to these two other boards that have seen this and they want to do the opposite. Can you, can you do this?
Yeah, the original proposal was to include this. And it was originally included by me because it was coupled with an elimination of large home review. But independent of that, it's, you know, the, the, the numbers itself and, and, you know, you can eliminate this by tweaking the numbers of what the F A R is, but the F A R is based on the average uh, house size in each district of, o- over its minimum lot requirement, minimum lot size requirement. And it was to build in some flexibility for people to potentially exceed it um, by a small amount, but rather than being as of right, which the F A R would be, it, it would be by a special permit. Then if you want to go try to build something that's over a hundred and ten percent of F A R, you, then that's when you'll hit the variance. Part of that. So the start on the, on the bylaw committee and the board of appeals was to keep that flexibility in. The thought on the select board was that if you give people the ability to go to a hundred and ten percent, they'll all take it. Um, and that a hard limit should be a li- a limit should be a limit.
Yeah, but Tom, they should understand you're going from forty percent, um, F A R to to less than ten percent F A R in residency.
I don't, well, I don't know.
Completely, you know, y- you're saying here, we'll give you ten percent more, but we're cutting it by a quarter or we're cutting it by three quarters.
Well, we're going to disagree about that one, but.
No, I mean, the numbers are the numbers, Tom. Right now, F A R that's allowed is, is approximately, it's forty percent with our twenty percent coverage.
Which is, yeah, which is.
That's, that's forty percent for a regular two-story house. Now, you're, you're cutting it to, to a quarter of that um, in, in residency, and then you're allowing people to apply for uh, a ten percent increase. It's really nothing. You're, you're taking away a lot of property value rights uh, in this, seemingly without realizing it. And it's, it's more aggressive than, than Brookline, which has ten times the density we have. It's a completely inappropriate thing for us.
Clark?
Yes, what?
As I've mentioned in all of these hearings and meetings and whatever, that the numbers of the F A R that it's proposed reflects our current development.
No, it doesn't. It doesn't. You took our existing zoning requirements area and then our average house size, not the average lot size and average house size.
And the average.
Wait a minute.
Stop, 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 stop.
Order, order, order.
We're not going to stop, but it's just.
No, we're not debating this tonight. I want to continue it until I get, I want to get Carolyn's opinion before we debate this, alright?
Are we going to debate it tonight or?
Point of order. Don't talk over each other. Behave as we're supposed to behave, one person speaking at a time.
I'm going to put forward a motion to continue this to November, to April twenty second at six thirty. So we can gather the input of town council.
Would you like to have somebody make a motion?
I made, just made the motion. I'd like somebody to second it.
Second.
Thank you. All in favor of that motion? Alphabetical roll call.
Okay.
Clark, you're first.
Brewer, I.
Tom Callahan.
Amy Glassmore, I.
Kevin Hein, I.
Deirdre Hobson, I.
Alright, so Carolyn, I don't want to put undue pressure on you, but uh, don't want this last minute. And if changes were available for me to discuss with the advisory committee on Wednesday, that would be great, but I, I get it if it were the big. But if you suggest edits, you just, I, you have to work on my schedule too, that, you know, I got to be able to incorporate them and circulate it. So I, I just, I just asked that we have this ready, you know, well in advance. Certainly, I, I would hope by Thursday or early Friday uh, of next week at the latest, if that's okay.
I will do my best. I will just let you all know, this is my town meeting season for a variety of communities. And, uh, I know Wednesday in particular, I will be with a community, putting all of their motions together for their upcoming town meeting, so, um, you know, I will do my best to get this to you, but, but, you know, where you have advertised the public hearing, I don't know what your intention was by that, that motion, Mr. Chair, whether it was just to put this discussion off as to the F A R or whether, you know, you're still going to discuss the other articles because.
No, last, last week at the opening of the public hearing, we, we did, we voted our recommendations on one through seven.
Okay.
So we were just continuing it because it got to be, I don't know, nine, nine thirty that night and we we knew this would be a longer discussion. Uh, and then, you know, by chance in the interim, the zoning board at the last minute set up a meeting with me for last night and and they made a number of valuable suggestions. It was actually a very productive meeting.
So the only, the only question that you really need me to focus on is just this particular amendment.
Yeah, I would, I would focus on this version here that I circulated earlier this morning. It's just, it has just articles eight and and, um.
Carolyn, I, I've asked Tom whether he knows of any other towns that use F A R. The only one I made the example of is Brookline, but it's not really a comparable. If you could, a- and I've looked on the internet, I, I, if you know of any other towns like ours that use F A R effectively, could you let us know as a part of your review?
Sure.
Thank you.
And I'll, I'll, I'll say what I've said before is that I consulted with the engineers in my building. Brookline has it, Newton has it. If anybody else has it, it's larger.
None of those are like, like Cohasset.
I understand that. They're larger, but like I, I said, and I'll continue to argue, there's no, nothing that stops us from being the first small town to do it.
They're not double. They're ten or twenty times denser, not.
I understand that. Which is why, which, which is why their F A R numbers are point three and point three five and things like that. Th- these are appropriate.
I don't want to argue with you, Tom. Can we just move on to the next thing?
No, we're done. This is, that's it. That's, we, we did the minutes early.
Alright, uh, motion to adjourn.
Second someone?
I, I believe Carolyn had something to speak.
I, thank you, Kevin. I was just gonna say, I can tell you that the town of Eastham, which perhaps is a little bit more like Cohasset than Newton and Brookline, they adopted um, what they call a residential lot intensity by law. They don't exactly call it F A R, but they call it, uh, the lot intensity. Uh, but that's only been in effect for about a year now, so I can't really tell you how well it works. I can just tell you it exists. And.
I, I, yeah, I saw that somewhere in what I was reading yesterday. I saw that, that somebody has something that's slightly different than F A R, or at least a different term.
And I can tell you that Edgar Town, um, when I, I know that that was on their town meeting warrant for a similar proposal last night.
And I wouldn't be surprised if Nantucket has considered it at some point, if they don't already have it, but.
Yeah, I mean, that's, that's the thing, is that it's not necessarily as clear as doing a search for F A R.
Yeah, yeah. Alright, well, whatever you can find would be helpful, but, you know, I, from, from an engineer's perspective, he, he only knew it to be in effect in larger town settlements, but. So, yeah, what, what, what?
It would be really appreciated if we work hard at not talking over one another. It extends the length of what we say, it garbles much of what we say, and we don't make as good a progress. So if we all just respect the regulations associated with Robert's rules, I think we would have more effective meetings.
Understood. Alright, so next week, we will meet Monday at six thirty for this, and we will meet Wednesday at six thirty for two app, the continued application from tonight, and Clark, that was just about lighting and their height calculation. And then we have the site plan review on three A for next Wednesday. Uh, two, two weeks from once, uh, two weeks from tonight, so. Alright, I will see you then. Thank you all for being here.
Amy? I think I made a motion, but it wasn't seconded.
Oh, it wasn't.
Um, one, one other question. When you're saying that next week, we will be talking about X and lights, what it was?
On the twenty-fourth, we have a site plan review on three A, new application. We have the continued continuation of the matter we had tonight, and the sole topics we asked them to bring to the next meeting was about the lighting, to reconsider the lighting and to give us their height calculations that they did. That's what we brought up.
Alright, thank you.
And so that will be the twenty-fourth at six thirty, and this will be the twenty-second. It says, yes, so I believe the, was the motion to adjourn seconded?
I will second that motion. Good evening, all.
Alright, all, all in favor.
Brewer, I.
Tom Callahan, I.
Amy Glassmore, I.
Kevin Hein, I.
Deirdre Hobson, I.
Alright, thank you all.
Thank you.